Let me call to order the December 3, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting for Pottstown Council. Would you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. We're going to start with employee recognition, years of service.
Yes.
Dan, Justin, Justin, Dan, excuse me a minute.
Yeah.
For everyone's information, to satisfy the requirements of the Sunshine Act, I want to announce that just before the meeting, Borough Council held an executive session to discuss terms and conditions of employment with respect to a current borough employee. Obviously, no action was taken. Have to make that announcement. Sorry to interrupt.
That's part of it. Thank you.
All right. Without further ado, so this is a great time of year for us. We get to present our annual Years of Service Recognition Program awards to our employees. In a minute, we're going to be playing a short presentation with the photos of... Oh, you don't have that yet? Just a list of the employees and their years of service. So, we initiated this recognition program in 2016 to show our appreciation for our full-time civilian employees. Our service milestones begin with five years of service throughout retirement. And on behalf of Borough Council and myself, I wish to extend congratulations to all on reaching these significant service milestones with the Borough of Pottstown. The loyalty and commitment each and every one of you have shown towards the success of this organization is much appreciated. And, you know, as I always say, employees are some of our best assets, and I really want to thank each and every one of you for your hard work and dedication. So, I'm going to read through the list of employees. If there are any employees here tonight with us, please come up and we'll give you your certificate and take a quick photo. So, first up in the first group, we've got five years of service. We have Jared Highlands, Julio Fuentes, Elizabeth Moyer, Lisa Miranda, Marco Giannetti. Next category is 10 years of service. We have Kyle Muth, Alex Gonzalez, and Ian Samuelson. 15 years of service, we have Nancy Lawrence. And 20 years of service, we have Anthony Rhodes. You want to come up, Anthony?
Good.
Congratulations. Absolutely. If you could just do a quick photo there. So, Anthony is one of our dedicated parks maintenance workers. So, when he's not busy keeping the parks pristine and beautiful, sometimes you'll see him quietly in the background at events, helping to set up behind the scenes and making sure that the events run smoothly. So, we really appreciate everything that Anthony does for us. Next up, we've got the big hitters here. 25 years of service, Lisa Brandt and Louis Cullen. And then 30 years of service, we have Karen Owens and Lori Skolsky. At 35 years of service, we have John Horvath and James Hennessy, as well as Catherine Henry. So, a round of applause for all those.
Under Emergency Services, Chief Handley, do you have reports, anything to add?
I just wanted to remind everyone that December 14th, I think Justin might have been reporting, Santa Claus would be coming around with the apparatus. It will start at 1:00 on December 14th, Sunday.
Very good.
And for you non-fire people, that's a fire truck.
Infrastructure, Councilor Lebedowski. Got it. Transportation, Councilor Proskol. Ordnance review, nothing. And economic development, Ms. Lee Clark.
Good evening, everybody. I want to start with, as I say, probably more months than not, every day is shop small. Please remember the small businesses in town, not in just the downtown, but all around the 5.5 miles of the borough. The local businesses, if you just spend $40, it makes such a big difference rather than just clicking "Ship to Me." So, please make sure you do that. Downtown dollars is now what we used to call the Yifty Gift Card. There is a downloadable app now, which makes it much easier, and we have been working with that entity to make sure that it's a smoothless transaction. We have Santa Saturday coming. So, Santa really must love Pottstown because he comes to Pottstown a lot. And unfortunately, he can't come via dragon boat this year because the river is so low and the silt has built up. So, Santa wrote from the North Pole and said that he would be happy to meet the fire truck at Borough Hall at 2:30 on Saturday and then take his ride to the alley. So, during that time, actually, starting at noon, Pottstown Community Arts is running in Smith Family Plaza, a lovely art show, and vendors will be there. Please go out and support that. They did move from Smith Family Plaza and... I'm sorry, they moved to Smith Family Plaza from Riverfront Park, as they have done in a previous year. So, Evan, thank you. I think he's up on the screen. Thank you for clarifying that. There was some confusion over that. So, Smith Family Plaza. Come here, the Bill Cost Band, from 3:00 to 6:00 at the Ugly Sweater Party. There will be prizes, and I think there's going to be an emcee that might be familiar to all of you. Councilor Manostro has agreed to do that. Friday and Saturday, It's a Wonderful Life with the Theater. You can finish the tree lighting at 6:00 PM. We're usually wrapped up by 6:30, right here in Smith Family Plaza, and then run over to, if you have tickets, to make sure that you get to Steel River to see It's a Wonderful Life. I'm told that the matinee on Sunday is sold out for that show.
Nice.
So, the other thing that is going on is the Streetscape Public Meeting, which is on December 10th at 5:30. It will be held at the Community College. Simone Collins will be there to present a plan, which is just a visionary plan that we will use to find funding, hopefully, in the future, to make sure that we can institute some of those things that rise to the top, that can just beautify the town even further. Commercial properties, what we're seeing in commercial properties is that sales are moving up in commercial properties here from the last two months. They have increased, and so we are continuing to monitor that. It continues to be a very uneven market. And I want to address the planters this year. Unfortunately, there is just no way to keep things going year after year, over and over. At one point, paid did take over the planters, and we ran a planter competition for several years. And we used to actually have to turn people away. People were so excited to come and adopt a planter. But as people have gotten busier and organizations have gotten stretched thinner, it's been tough to keep that up, and planters didn't necessarily show as well as they had in the past. The weather got to them. Unfortunately, some of our maybe-not-nicer citizens that were on the naughty list took things out of the planters. So, it was very hard to monitor those planters on a long-term basis. And now, with the... With not having a person that is employed directly, working for the bid, we will be replacing that position, but we don't have anybody. It's just not possible to keep up with that, as that was a largely volunteer project. But at the Ugly Sweater Party at the Clock Tower, you will see some beautiful planters. I got a preview of some of our dedicated citizens that have adopted those planters. So, look for some beautiful decorations there, and we hope you all come out and then also go and spend your $40 out of business. And that is my report. Happy holidays to everybody. I guess you want Land Bank next.
I do.
Okay. So, Land Bank is 421 Hale was approved as a new agreement with the developer. The developer had run out of its time. It was expired for what they were... They had originally proposed to do, and the Land Bank did grant an extension and has created a new development plan with that entity. And I'll go back to economic development. You all at your seats have the Reflect, the two-year paid's report of our 60th anniversary. It was called Reflect. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. From the Business Improvement District, Councilor Manostro.
Well, she's pretty much said everything. Why don't you give me this? But anyway, all I have to add is that 70% of the assessments have been collected, which is pretty good, and leaving 30% down. The other thing I want to talk about, did you get that electric line for the band? Okay, thank you, Doug. And, yeah, we meet several times a month now, keep trying to come up with things to bring people into the downtown and support our local businesses. So, that's what we keep trying to do.
Thanks. Thank you. Human relations, Ms. Lebedowski.
Good evening, councilors, council president, and Madam Mayor. One of the duties of the commission is to make studies into the status of human relations in the community at large. On Friday, November 21st, 2025, a fire at a house of worship dating back to 1861 has left the community in mourning. Frank Hand, there was a quote, that Frank Hand, from the article in the Pottstown Mercury, and I want to read it to you. It says, "The town lost a beautiful historic building, which is very sad. There were so many weddings, funerals, and baptisms that took place there. The kind of loss is hard to measure." Very well, very well said. And then Evan Brandt, in that same article, the very last sentence, says, "The impact of the fire will be felt not just in structures lost, but in the memories and community bonds that have been irrevocably changed." Evan, that is so true. "It is early, but can we say time heals all wounds?" We would like to congratulate Councilor Lindsay, Councilor Lebedowski, and President Ween for their service and support on council.
Is Trinida leaving?
Are you leaving?
I'm sorry. Not Trinida.
I was almost done.
No, you're not leaving. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I looked at you for a minute. That's why I'm sorry. Lebedowski and Councilor Ween, thank you for your... The commission thanked you for your support and for your service. So, so sorry.
How was that? Because you made me the house.
Okay. We wish them well in their future endeavors. Now, we can go on to some more positive things. The month of December is full of religious and cultural celebrations, as we're having celebrations in town. The first day of winter, believe it or not, is on December 21st. Christmas is December 25th. That's our Christian holiday. Christmas has become a cultural holiday for many, including non-Christians, which includes many celebratory traditions, including decorations, trees, wreaths, sharing meals with family and friends, holiday music, exchanging gifts, and the arrival of Santa Claus. Hanukkah, the Jewish holiday, begins on December 15th and ends on December 22nd, and it is the Festival of Lights, and that's celebrated with nightly memorial lightings, prayers, and special foods. And then we have Kwanzaa, starting on December 26th, the week-long celebration of African heritage and African-American culture, and that ends on January the 1st. The commission's December meeting is scheduled to be held on Tuesday, December the 9th, at 6:00 PM in council chambers. All are welcome to attend, and the commission welcomes the joyous holiday season to all. My apologies, Trinida.
From the library, Joseph here, no one. Right? And from the Ricketts Center, Councilor...
I'm going to... He gave me him as proxy. Nothing happened.
Nothing. Okay. School district, Councilor Trinida.
Okay, there we go. At the high school, they have a winter concert Wednesday, December 10th, at the high school's auditorium. Go there, support their concert. That's all I have. Oh, sorry. 7:00 PM.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. From Herr Hendrick, can you report?
Yes, good evening. In the interest of time and our presentations that we have this evening, I would just like to give my report on Monday, if that's okay, and just make it brief tonight, and say thank you very much to Public Works. You guys have been incredible, your entire department. I have received numerous emails from residents thanking me for all of your hard work, calling you guys out. So, I thank you. I put in a service request. It was handled immediately. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Very good. And our manager, Mr. Kell.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. A couple of updates for you. So, in the spirit of the holiday season, I just want to extend my gratitude to our employees and diligent staff for their efforts in embellishing the town with the holiday decorations. So, these included our traditional snowflakes hung from the LED streetlights on High Street, the installation of the 18-foot or so tree out in Smith Family Plaza that we'll do the tree lighting for on Saturday at 6:00, if you all want to be there. And then, we also have a six-foot wreath that we have on the top of the building as well. So, and as Frank mentioned, as part of the celebrations, on Sunday, the 14th, Santa will be riding around town on the fire truck. So, kids, look out, look out for that in your neighborhood. Just want to note one thing. We were having some technical issues with the Borough Hall sign. We have to get it repaired, so I just want to ask everyone for some patience, as there's some outdated items that might be on there, and we're trying to get those fixed. An update on rental program enhancements. So, as part of the borough's rental program modernization efforts, staff has finalized improvements to landlord communications, including the introduction of email-based invoice notifications. So, emails will now supplement the mailed copies and include direct links for online payments for rental registration and rental inspection. So, this will help to streamline compliance and improve convenience for property owners. So, in the upcoming weeks, as we roll this out, landlords should be on the lookout for a pre-notification email informing them in advance that official billing emails will be arriving from the borough's licensing inspections department. So, that way, you can verify that it's not spam or not a phishing attempt or something like that. They are legitimate. And the rental invoice emails will also include clear instructions for payments. You can also opt out of receiving a paper bill and go paperless through that notice. And then, there'll be some attached documents, such as a checklist, to help you get ready for your inspection. So, we're doing all this to help increase the efficiency, not only for Borough Hall operations, but for landlords as well, and to allow faster turnaround for inspection scheduling, as well as to reduce paper use. And then, lastly, I would just like to extend my deepest gratitude to everyone involved in responding to the inictus fire incident, to the dedicated firefighters, emergency personnel, the police, all the supporting agencies, the county. Their swift action and professionalism and teamwork really helped to contain the situation and prevented further loss of property and injuries for what was a very dangerous fire. I also want to thank the residents of Pottstown for their cooperation and patience and their concern for one another. You know, I think together, really, that day, our community demonstrated resiliency, care, and an unwavering commitment to our neighbors and to public safety, and we're just proud and grateful for everyone who played a role in keeping Pottstown safe. And that wasn't the last thing. So, I have two little surprises to present. We've got two resolutions. If Dan and Don could come up to the front.
Seriously?
No, he's just kidding. Surprise.
I got scared because we didn't print one for Trinida.
And you know I feel some type of way about it. Don't play with me.
All right. So, President Ween, it's been a long time that you've been here serving the borough, and it's been a pleasure to work with you, and we wanted to present this resolution to you, recognizing you for your 16 years of distinguished service to the Borough of Pottstown. Whereas, the Borough of Pottstown recognizes individuals whose dedication, leadership, and longstanding commitment have contributed significantly to the betterment of our community. And whereas, Dan began his public service on the Planning Commission in October, 1999, offering thoughtful guidance, stewardship, and a vision for responsible growth and development. And whereas, in 2010, he was elected to serve as councillor for the 5th Ward, faithfully representing residents, addressing local concerns, and advancing policies that strengthen the borough. And whereas, through continued leadership and the confidence of his colleagues, Dan was selected to serve as council president in 2016, and has continued to serve until present, providing steady direction, fostering collaboration, and ensuring effective governance. And whereas, throughout his tenure, he further distinguished himself through valuable service on numerous committees, including the Finance Committee, the Efficient Methods Committee, and served on both the Uniform and Nonuniform Pension Boards, where his insight, diligence, and commitment to accountability greatly benefited the borough. And now, therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and town council, that Dan Ween is officially recognized for the outstanding service he has provided to the Borough of Pottstown through 16 years of dedicated community service, and further that he has extended the best wishes for a happy and well-deserved retirement. Congratulations.
This is the first resolution was handed out in the last six years that I didn't sign.
Dan, face this way so we can get a nice photo of her. And, sorry, I only got the side of you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Vice President, Councilor Lebedinsky. So, recognizing... You passed the Ukrainian speech test. Lebedinsky? Great, good. I don't, I don't get them all right, and you... Everyone can attest to that. If you came to any of the bid hearings, I didn't get all the names pronounced right, but I try my best, so. All right, I'll take that win. So, recognizing Donald J. Lebedinsky for seven years of distinguished service to the Borough of Pottstown. Whereas, dedicated public service strengthens our community and contributes to an effective, responsive local government. And whereas, Donald has faithfully served the borough as council member for the 3rd Ward, beginning in 2018, demonstrating commitment, leadership, and a strong sense of civic responsibility. And whereas, he further distinguished himself through service as Vice President of Borough Council in 2020, providing guidance, cooperation, and steady leadership during a period of community challenges and transitions. And whereas, Donald has contributed valuable insight and diligence as a member of the Efficient Methods Committee, working to improve government processes and ensure effective, transparent operations. And whereas, he has also provided responsible oversight and stewardship of public resources through his service on the Finance Committee, helping to support sound fiscal policy and long-term stability for the borough. Now, therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and town council, hereby expresses its sincere appreciation for Donald J. Lebedinsky for his dedicated service, leadership, and commitment to the Borough of Pottstown through seven years of dedicated community service, and has extended best wishes for his future endeavors. Congratulations.
So... We got one here, we got one here. You got yours? Okay.
Dan. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. You're fine.
Nope, we still have that one coming up.
In that case, let's do that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hannah. I am from the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. Some of you may have heard of our group already. There we go. I am the Destination Experience Coordinator, which is a bit of a mouthful to say that I work with social media, help promoting our different members, and I also work a little bit at Valley Forge National Historical Park. So, for those of you who don't know, we are a nonprofit organization that partners with people and businesses all across Montgomery County to help show either locals or people who are just visiting just how great Montgomery County is. So, the reason we're called the Valley Forge Tourism Convention Board is because there's 18 other Montgomery Counties in the country, and we figure everyone knows where Valley Forge is, so that's where we are. Oh, no. So, our mission is inspiring the world to fall in love with Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. And our vision is it's a must-see destination rooted in the past and leading the future. And a lot of that is, you know, we have a lot of historical locations. I know Pots Grove Manor is here, the Valley Forge National Historical Park. So, we have a lot of different marketing opportunities that are available to our members. We have blogs written, social media, billboards that are available, in-house creative, and our very own mascot named Monty the Fox. So, as one of these marketing opportunities, this is a video that we just did recently for the Cole Brookdale Railroad. for the Cole Brookdale Railroad. So, and then normally at the end of those, we put like our little logo, a little fade out, so it doesn't end that abruptly. There we go. So here's just a little breakdown of our members. As you see in the corner there, we have already a bunch of members in the Pottstown area. Going back to the marketing opportunities, we also have a couple guides available. We actually have newer ones, but we weren't able to get pictures ready in time. We have our Crave Montco, which is our dining guide. Our golf guide is actually replaced with an arts guide, so it's all sculptures and artworks and where to find them in Montgomery County. And then we have our regular visitors' guide, which is a little bit of both. And right now, we actually have a special America 250 Visitors Guide, where we hired a local artist to make the cover. And our website is overallvalleyforge.org receives 2 million annual page views. And our consumer e-news has over 17,000 subscribers, where we regularly feature members and their events. This is another video from our social following. We have over 300,000 total followers across all social media platforms, and we have about 25 million video views per year. So this is one that was done for the BMX event that was in Pottstown recently. Yeah, we're very lucky to have a really great, our third party, Josh Pellegrini, does a lot of really great video capture for us. So we have a bunch of annual events that, you know, run throughout the year. We have our Rev Run, our revolutionary five-mile run at the Valley Forge National Historical Park. The Travel Rally, Montco Golf, Montco Meetups, and Annual Luncheon are all things that our members can participate in. They're kind of networking events. We have a lot of social content done there, too. It's just really great for everyone to all meet up. And, we're skipping this one.
America be-
Oh, this, sorry, no, that is one we want to start. I'm sure you all have heard America 250 being thrown around here and there. We actually made a video for honoring the history of America 250, so I just wanted to play that.
America began with a spark.
This also played during the Thanksgiving parade, if it looks familiar.
A retreat reignited a revolution. Centuries later, the history that was made here still shapes our landscape with stories waiting to be discovered. These sacred halls and hallowed grounds are alive with the memory of world-changing events echoing forward for future generations to hear. An opportunity to turn back the clock and witness history march off the page and into our imaginations. On our country's momentous 250th anniversary, it's time to reconnect, to remember, and to reignite our own spark on a retreat unlike any other. In Valley Forge and Montgomery County, we honor our past. We celebrate the present and build the future together.
So along with the videos and content that will be coming out during America 250, we also have the Houses of Declaration Initiative. So the Houses of Declaration is a program where a bunch of places, either just local businesses or historical sites, will read out the Declaration of Independence the way it would have been read in the 1700s. And this could be a full-fledged event, or it could be part of, I know Pottstown has their Go Fourth Celebration, so it could be part of that, too. Right now, we have, actually, that's a little outdated, I think we have three more Houses of Declaration that have been confirmed, and they're all over Montgomery County. It's going to be the Fourth of July weekend, so the Third, Fourth, and Fifth. And we're just hoping that everyone will be able to work together and we'll get some great stuff out of us. So lastly, I have our Freedom from Hunger Initiative. So our Freedom from Hunger Initiative is a donation-based, and all proceeds go to the Montco Anti-Hunger Network. And already, we have been able to donate the monetary equivalent of over 10,000 pounds of food to those in need. And because of the recent government shutdown, we're actually extending this initiative over the winter. And regular people are able to donate, but also businesses are able to help out, too. They can donate a portion of their proceeds to the Freedom from Hunger. And if, you know, anyone's interested in donating or knows anyone who knows a business, thevalleyforge.org/hunger is where you would go. And that's it. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present.
Thank you.
Okay, for our budget update for 2026, Marley?
Good evening. I'm here tonight to present an updated budget, our final update for the year. Right now, we have reduced the deficit to 387,000. It would be a millage increase of .483 mils, a total millage of 15.601 mils, and an overall tax increase of 3.19%. Based on properties that are assessed at $100,000, this would increase tax bills by $40.30. So the budget comparison just kind of shows where we started in October and where we're at now in December. So we did start with a deficit of 600,000, a tax increase of 4.98. And I just presented where we're at tonight. So this is the final budget. It's a $65 million budget, again, a 3.19% tax increase, adding $40.30 to properties assessed at $100,000. We will be asking council to approve this budget on Monday. I believe the ordinance to do so for the millage needs to be revised from last month. Are there any questions?
Ron? Yeah, just a comment. So appreciate everyone's work on shaving this down further. It wasn't easy, because in the midst of this, we found out about the layoffs at Tower Health, which we are estimating impact our general fund revenue of about $60,000 of earned income tax and local service tax, because these are good wages that are being paid there. So that is factored into this December final budget summary, but we were able to shave a little bit additional for that. We got some positive news back from workers' comp insurance, so that helped a little bit as well as other departmental cuts.
Okay, any other year-end items?
The fee schedule. So as we present every year, the purpose of the fee schedule is to define charges for municipal services and to ensure cost recovery and financial stability for the municipality. We ask the directors to review our fees every year so that we're in line with actual costs that reflect inflation or rising overhead costs. And in turn, we are working on finalizing that document. We will have that ready for you on Friday. But we will be asking council to approve the updated or amended fees for 2026. They are associated with the airport, the police department, finance and tax department, licensing and inspections department, and fees associated with the Borough of Pottstown Authority that have already been approved by the Authority Board. Any and all existing fees not referenced in the resolution will remain unchanged and in full effect. And then, once the fees are approved, we will provide the 2026 fee schedule to the public.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marley. Okay. Now, Mr. Garner?
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Wanted to talk briefly about the January meeting dates. I think everyone on council is aware that, under the state law and specifically the borough code, in even-numbered years, boroughs are required to hold a reorganizational meeting the first Monday in January. And the reason for that is it follows the municipal election, which would have occurred in the fall of the prior year. So essentially, it would become a new council. The reorganization meeting essentially is wearing it of the newly-elected councillors. Council would elect their officers and make certain appointments at the meeting. That meeting is required to be held January. Traditionally and historically in the borough, that reorganization meeting is primarily ceremonial. It's usually a brief meeting. There's not actual business other than what's required by the law. So we've done in the past, the committee of the whole meeting would be scheduled for two nights later, that Wednesday, which is normal. But staff did not want to presuppose any meeting dates beyond the January meeting dates, because technically, the new council could have the ability to change meeting dates. So we would ask for motions on Monday night to authorize January meetings as they are listed on your agenda. And obviously, this would be revisited at the January meeting, and then new, aside, the meeting schedule for the remainder of the year. So happy to answer the questions you guys have, but we don't have a lot of leeway as far as the reorg meeting. But staff thought it was best to keep the same sequence of meetings to allow the new president and vice president time to work and look at the agenda, rather than having the committee of the whole meeting, the reorg meeting, the same. So that's the plan. If you guys agree with it, we'll take care of the advertisement.
Chuck, what time? What time is for you?
For the reorg meeting, Trinita?
Yes.
It can be whatever you want. I mean, you-
Just curious, since I didn't say it here.
Yeah, I mean, normally it's 7:00. It can be 6:30. It can really be anything.
Okay.
Typically, we try and get one of the district judges to come in and give the oath of office to the new council, but, you know, that's not required. So sometimes, depending upon the judge's schedule, you know, we move that around. But obviously, five of you are going to be there, so you can tell what time you want to have your reorg meeting on the 5th.
Okay. Chuck, if I may, West Pots Grove Township has their reorg meeting at the same, on the same day, and Judge Palladino needs to split his time between here and there. So maybe if council could work on a time to organize that.
Yeah, we can check with them. I mean, if you guys are flexible on the time, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't do anything before, I think, 6:00. But if they do theirs at 7:00, we can do ours at 6:00, maybe, or, you know, and work with it that way, so.
Yeah, whatever.
We'll reach out.
You're correct, Mayor. We also could use Judge Crop as well. I mean, I know he'll probably do lower Pots Grove. I mean, everybody's reorganizing that night, so they have. But we can certainly check if one of the judges is available and what time would be their preference. But obviously, you know, suit you guys, so you have to be there.
Any questions?
Not, those are the items for January that you'll be holding, and the new council can decide.
Okay. Now, for the police civil service test.
Yes, I'll take that one. So we're asking council to authorize the civil service testing process for both the position of corporal and sergeant. So we do not currently have any openings, but we do know that one of those positions will be retiring in January, and another one will be retiring in April. So the civil service is a process of the written exam and interview, and what it does is it creates a rank and order list based on those testing results for promotions of each position. So that we can do this now, so that we can be prepared to fill those positions more quickly, once those other sergeants retire.
Okay. So let's list that for Monday. And Mr. Garner, the release and hold harmless for 11, or 13 West Fourth Street.
Yes, this, I mean, this is pretty much a standard document. I think council's aware of it. The borough controls its right-of-way, the property on West Fourth Street would like to install a set of wooden steps. It will encroach slightly into the borough right-of-way. There's still plenty of room for sidewalk. But the property owners have signed the necessary release and hold harmless, requesting council to grant them permission to install these steps within the right-of-way. It's fully signed, and it's a legitimate document, and it would suggest council vote to approve it so that they can move forward the improvement to the property.
Okay. We'll approve that Monday evening. And the LSA grant resolution for a fire truck?
Yes, so we're asking council to authorize a resolution for the statewide local share assessment grant of 550,000 through the Commonwealth Financing Authority. And this is intended to be used for a fire engine replacement. If you recall, there was, one of Goodwill's engines was damaged by an electrical fire over a year ago, and they would like to replace that with this grant. We weren't, we applied for it last year, we weren't successful, and LSA is asking all the applicants to reapply. So that's what we would like to ask council to do. There's no match, but Goodwill will be using their insurance settlement to cover the remaining cost of the engine should the grant be successful.
Okay. And anything we need to do?
You would just need to authorize a resolution to approve us to apply for the grant.
Well, in that case, list it for Monday.
And that'll be on Monday.
Okay. Now, we have a lot of opportunities for a lot of volunteers. The upcoming board vacancies, the Pottstown Borough Authority, zoning hearing board, HARB, environmental advisory council, blighted property review committee, and the vacancy board. I don't see that we have any applicants at the time, although I assume some will be just renewed, your blighted, for example. Now, please, it's 23,000 people in the town, and we're only asking for a dozen to come out and volunteer and help us? Okay. It's time for comments from our citizens here.
All right. Just as a reminder, everyone will have five minutes, and we typically do not respond, but if there is a question, we'll get back to you after the meeting. So first up, we have Sheila Dugan, please.
I wanted to first take this opportunity to thank the firefighters who worked tirelessly to try and save our home one Friday, November 21st, in the early morning hours. More than 25 different fire companies- More than 25 different fire companies arrived on scene to battle the fire that began at the old Invictus Church next door to our home. Though every firefighter gave it their all, they were unable to stop the spread of flames from the church to our home. Our children watched, along with their dad and I, the last 15 years of our lives become nothing more than a pile of rubble. Our hearts sank the moment we heard the evacuation call to the firefighters, just moments after they arrived. We prayed you would all be safe, and we understood the call to begin your fight against the flames from the exterior. It is because of you, Biggie Small, my daughter's bearded dragon, whose rescue appeared on the news, is alive and well. Because of you, the wedding dress my daughter wore just last year at this time, we believe we can restore. Because of you, my younger son has his Legos. Because of you, the letters my father wrote to me when I was in kindergarten and he was in Vietnam are safe. And because of you, the damn piano we've been trying to get rid of for 10 years is also safe. That's a story to laugh about, despite the tragedy that took so much from our family. Because of our local station's training and work with junior firefighters, two of our children started their firefighting career here in this community. For this, we thank you and from the bottom of our hearts, God bless you, and may you remain safe whenever you're called to future duties. To all of you in our community, we will never be able to reach you all with a personal thank you, but know you will always be remembered as the village that came to help. Your hugs, your support, and generosity will never be forgotten. We will one day be whole again, and we will one day pay it forward. Ms. Fanny, you failed. You failed to listen, you failed to care. You failed this community when you ignored our many requests to get a handle on the sober houses that began to encroach into our neighborhoods back in 2020. You chose to throw your hands up in the air and told me time and time again that there was nothing you could do because of federal ADA Act, yet other towns have. You continued to ignore the reality of how the sober homes in this community do not work. While residents of successful sober homes remain in the, between 12 to 18 months, our sober homes run on a six-week cycle. And as long as the residents have their $200 a week to pay the landlord, they can stay the full six weeks. And when their money or time runs out, they will be kicked out into the street to join the rest of the homeless population. These sober house residents come from different towns and states, they are not locals. Nine unrelated men, including criminals, live next door to us, and not even so much as a fire escape is in place. How long do you intend to hide behind the ADA Protection Act when you enforce none of it? And Ms. Mayor, your plan, like too many other plans in town, failed those of us who pay have businesses, own homes, and once felt safe in our own neighborhoods. Your homeless hotel has hurt the neighboring businesses, and it's another poorly planned idea that has added to the crime, drugs, and unwelcome social issues in our community. Free is not free to those of us who work hard to keep our homes neat, businesses afloat, and our families safe. Your so-called rules for the residents in the hotels serve no good when they slip up and you get kicked out. Like all too often, you had no plan. Imagine the photo op, instead of kicking those people out of the shelter when they slip up, you get them real help. Imagine the sober houses actually following the ADA regulations and residents staying for 12 to 18 months. It's not just a moneymaker for landlords. Imagine a community that helps provide volunteer opportunities for those being helped. Opportunities learn not to trash the areas they stay, reminding everyone that being poor is not a reason to not care. Imagine a community that isn't afraid to hold people accountable for their actions. Your poor decisions led the church to my home to burn down. You did nothing more than create another photo opportunity for yourself and-
That's your time.
-problem for the community. I'm going to finish this.
No.
That's-
But our community-
That's up to council. That's up to council.
Please let her talk.
I'm with him.
Please let her talk.
I'm with him. You failed not only my family, but our community. The next time you stay, we are all just one paycheck away from being homeless, you can now add, and one preventable senseless fire can leave you without a home. And to all of you who sit up here month after month, several of you who go home to your own little town and leave the massive social issues in the workplace, you have failed. You failed the community of people who worshiped in a beautiful church. You failed all of us who now displace because of the failed act, your fear of being sued, your inability to listen to your community, and when they have been crying for help for years. You have failed, and I pray that this will be a lesson that forces you all to do better. When you go home tonight in your warm beds and comfortable homes, I hope you remember the pictures of the flames that took and destroyed my home, knowing that you are the reason I am now homeless.
All right, next up, we have Philip Tease.
Philip Tease, 63 South Evans Street, Pottstown, lifetime resident. Regrettably, that is one of the most important speeches I have ever heard at council given by this lady just before me. You know, I recall last year, no, this year, did I not come in in one council meeting and say, "There is a well over on North Washington Street, and we should have water supply in case the water system fails, in case there's a fire?" Has anyone stopped to think how blessed this community was that that fire did not take place the Sunday of the big wind, just a few days before that or after that? I've forgotten now when it was. How much more of this town would be gone right now? You know, I understand it was looked at that well, but I don't know what had happened to the, from that point on. And we do need to have control of people who think they can do whatever they want, wherever they want, however they want in this community. It isn't that we're mean-spirited, it's just we're paying the bills. And it's just a pity, just a pity. People that work hard get burnt out of their home, and a, and a historical building built in 1859 in rubble. And you know, I can think, I don't need a PhD, I looked at the wreckage. And you stand there over it, in, in the graveyard next to Zion's, and you look at that, what was Invictus, which was Transfiguration before it, and you look at that building, and you see three windows on the ground level floor of the original Sunday School, all intact. That fire started in the sanctuary. What caused that fire? Many people in the town have an opinion, but it's, it doesn't take a PhD to figure out it just happened out of the clear blue sky. And I don't want to see anybody, any church, further burnt out of this community. And I want to thank the ones, one council, that tried to stop this sort of thing. And I hope those remaining will take to heart that we have a duty and a right to be protected in our community. And I wish you all a blessed Christmas to come, and I hope that the people that have lost their home will find good shelter in the new year. And I pray so, and I pray for this community daily. That's all, and I thank you all, and a blessed Christmas to come.
Thank you. Next up is Betsy Ween Kilkeny.
Good evening, everyone. I must admit, hearing so much about the tragedy that happened recently, this feels a little odd to share some positive remarks after all that, and I truly do say, my family has been holding everyone in their prayers. Well, I am pleased to be here tonight to address council, but specifically you, President Weend, as you wind down your last meetings here on Pottstown Council. Being born and raised in Pottstown, I can personally say that I do remember the good old days. I remember growing up as our family frequented many stores on High Street for services, goods, dress shops, florists, bakeries, and everything in between. Shops decorated for the holidays, and everyone seemed to know one another. But I also remember what happened when six major manufacturers left, icons like Mrs. Smith Pies, Dole Jarvis, and Stanley Flag. And in our household, when Flag closed, our family joined more than 1,200 employees who were suddenly without work. And with manufacturing jobs going away, malls moving in in their place, and causing several, several of those small businesses to close, it was very difficult for anyone to carry on a town spirit. But that is when you, President Weend, showed me and showed many others what it means to pull together, to come together for our community. During those unsettling years, I remember your service in Pottstown, volunteering in many different organizations, from hosting food drives, working with churches, cleaning up streets and parks, working with business owners, even organizing events that made folks realize that the town was worth fighting for. I even remember the year that you were president of the Pottstown Rotary Club, and during your first year, you organized the Fourth of July duck race. And that first year, it brought in over $40,000 for several charities in our town. And I remember this because I still have the duck costume that I wore in the Fourth of July parade with you. It is true that you don't just see a challenge and wait for others to make a difference, you see ways to come together and fix challenges for the community to be better. I also remember when you, President Weend, and then school board director, Polly Weend, worked together to raise over $300,000 to restore the stadium lights on the Pottstown football field, so students and our community could once again participate in Friday night lights. So I guess I wasn't too surprised when you decided to run and were then elected to council 16 years ago. You saw Pottstown for what it could be, and it still can be today, and for 16 years, you have worked tirelessly to bring back businesses, jobs, and all the things that make Pottstown a thriving community, my hometown community. Your service on council has never been about just attending ribbon cuttings and a photo op, but thousands of hours spent working, days, nights, weekends, on budgets to keep the taxes down, working with the police to address crime, working with business owners to make the community a sought-after destination for investors to come here and bring jobs back to the community. Sure, people look around and they see the new restaurants, the carousel, the ribbon-cutting events, but I know the unfathomable amount of hours that it takes for that unseen work to make those visions become a reality. And it's times it can be easy for the public to get caught up in disputes, point fingers, take to angry rants when things aren't going someone's way. No one said it's easy to lead a town, especially when you're trying to do your best for every citizen, each of whom have equally important, but different wants, different dreams, different needs. But time and time again, you have shown-
You have 30 seconds.
...that addressing challenges is not about winners or losers. It's about showing up, doing the work, having ongoing conversations, doing the research to have informed decisions, and addressing challenges even when they aren't easy. President Weend, you've been a role model for me my whole life, but also a role model for Pottstown for more than 16 years. You always taught me to follow the code of service above self, to leave a place better than you found it, and I personally want to thank you for going above and beyond to leave Pottstown in a better place than the year you were first elected. You leave a legacy of accomplishments, but also the spirit for others to recognize that anything can be possible. So publicly, I'd like to say, President Weend, Dad, thank you for your service.
That was good.
Next up, we have Deb Spence, please, online.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So my, I have a few, I have several questions. I'm going to start with the bid. I, I'd like to know why the person that was hired to run it left. How were they, how were they selected? And what's the process to find another person? And if community people were interested, where can they apply for this position? And is this public notice or public record somewhere? I feel like I have an echo. And, and can I have the answer to this, these questions within like seven to 10 days and not, like, have to come here every month and ask the same questions over and over again? My, my next question is in regards to the requirements for committee. I noticed that really the construction committee has the requirement, and the other ones don't have requirements listed. They did at some point, then they were removed. I know I questioned some on the land bank, and what it got back was different from what the state has. Can there be a process where requirements are posted online for who can apply? I also don't understand why people are in multiple roles, multiple committees. I think one is that in at least three. I think it should be a limitation, as to how many committees you can serve on. I think there should be more outreach to find volunteers. I know when volunteers do apply, they are projected, embarrassed if they don't belong to a certain closed group. And, and that's very pointed, because obviously, there's a need for diverse voices in this community and not just one group thing, voice. My next question is in regards to the human relations committee, can they do something other than just recite the holidays every month? That's, it's very annoying to come here and, and see that a committee is only there to recite holidays. There's so much more to, to human relations than reciting the holidays every month. My next question or, or comment is, I noticed that there's a link on the website about resources. I don't see Jump Start Pottstown there. I would like to request that Jump Start Pottstown be added. That is a program that is intended to revitalize Pottstown with teaching adults about real estate education. And it's not a poverty program, so I think this is a better program in that it's more about empowerment of community members and not holding them down in poverty and uplifting them in empowerment to not only buy homes in Pottstown where they live, work and, and serve, but also to help them buy, become investors for those that are renters. And I see that the resource link has Silver River, I don't know how that's a resource, but if Silver River and some of the others that are there are considered resources, I like Jump Start Pottstown to be there because that is a resource, and it's an empowerment resource. And adult education is extremely important to, as Sheila Dugan just discussed, a lot of the social issues. And, uh, okay, 30 seconds left. When, my last question, when will the fire investigation come out? Can I find it? Can I read it, read the investigation results? And again, just to reiterate, I have these answers to the questions within seven, 10 days and not to come here every month and ask the same question. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Okay. And from our counselors. Sir, Ward one.
Of course, I'm, you know, too really upset about the untransfer configuration in Invictus Church incident. You know, it's a, I had helped a friend of mine with something in there, it was just, you know, spectacular to see the ceilings, and, and as a woodworker, that was one of the most- And as a woodworker, that was one of the most amazing buildings. So obviously, I really appreciate all the efforts from emergency service and borough staff and all the people that were affected by it. And Don, Dan, we have one more meeting. It was a pleasure working with you.
Ward 2, councillor Benny.
Yes, I have some questions, but I do want to acknowledge that I appreciate the comments. And Mrs. Dugan, I'm really sorry for what happened to you, but I, single-handedly, cannot stop sober homes. And your anger is misdirected. I have done nothing but fight for your concerns for the last number of years. And you can ask that question. And there is seven of us up here, along with solicitors. I cannot solve that problem alone. That said, some of my questions regarding the fire is, was the, and I'm not expecting answers tonight unless we have them. Was that building insured? Who was paying for the cleanup? How was that building secured after there was reports of people going inside? Was it just a window that was fixed or was the entire building secured? Was this building, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chuck, I think several years ago, we had an ordinance about vacant buildings. I'm not sure that ordinance would have prevented what happened, but I'd like to know if they're on that list of vacant buildings. And to me, if you own a commercial building, your goal should be to fill that with a business, not leave it vacant for over a year. So I think we, as council, need to take a look at what we can do as far as requiring some type of security system, some type of security to secure the building. That should be common sense to me. It shouldn't have been left in this condition for over a year. So I'd like us to look at what we can do. Unfortunately, I guess we're going to have to set some rules, laws, or ordinances to tell people that they need to secure a building. The last thing I have, I think, is, is insurance required on a building? And if not, can we require proof of insurance when they buy a building or it's vacant for a certain period of time? That's all I have.
Okay. Vice President Lebedinsky.
We're down to one meeting.
One more.
It's been a pleasure working with all of you. And I'm saying this now because we're on TV. Thank you for everything that we've experienced over the last eight years. I appreciate it all. Thank you.
Councillor Lindsay. What do you have from Ward 3 to 4?
I have nothing. I'm going to miss you guys, though.
You can invite us over.
I wanted to come with you, but they changed that. It's okay.
Two years. Okay. Councillor Minasstra.
Yeah, a couple of things. One of the things I learned from the tragedy that occurred is how tremendous of a fire department that we have. They are, I watched the fire. And I watched them choreograph those spires with water, making sure that nobody got hurt. That minimized the damage. Chief Hand, I'm very proud of your department. And thank you. And I understand and I know that you do what you do with the pittance that we give you, okay? And you make do with that. And we appreciate that. And I wish I could promise you that we'll give you more. But I can't. I can't promise you that. Okay? I can't promise you that when we have $2.3 million in taxes that aren't collected because they don't have to be paid, but they don't have a community sense to pay a portion of it. And so it's not likely that we will be able to help you with the library, with the Ricketts Center. Because people are using services and expecting senior citizens to get their taxes raised every year, be thrown out of their house. Or even worse, or even equally bad, not worse, equally bad, is having the lowest-income people being thrown out of their houses because they can't afford the rental rates. Because rents have to be raised to cover the expenses. We cannot keep spending other people's money. Because I have found that that is the easiest thing in the world to do, is to spend somebody else's money. And we're going to stop doing that. We're going to learn how to cover our expenses without burdening our seniors or burdening the least of us. I wish I had a solution for you, other than we're going to try. And Ray and Josh, I look forward to working with you next year so that we can pay for what we want and find new ways to do things. So, you know, so I'm not going to talk about the fire other than it's not important to me how it was caused. It doesn't matter. I'll leave that to the politicians in Washington to blame people and think they've solved the problem. I don't know if it was a homeless person. I don't know if it was a drug person. I don't know if it was a bunch of kids having a keg in a room, in a house. I don't know, okay? But what I do know is that it was a vacant building. And we have far too many of them. And we have rules and ordinances that are to prevent this kind of stuff to happen. And the more we secure these vacant homes and vacant buildings, the less likely it is that people will come to find them and break into them. So we need to address the vacant home problem or the vacant building problem because that's the actual problem. We can't solve that. I am not Barbara Eden and I can't do this, okay? But what I can do is try to solve the problems that we have the ability to do so. And I think vacant buildings is one. Oh, and Dan, Don, love you guys and thank you.
All right. Councillor Kirkland.
I think most everything that I want to say has been shared. But I do want to just put my hand on the pal and just say, I do feel for everyone affected and involved in the fire. So, and you have my prayers. So if you need anything, please contact me. Also want to thank Dan and Don for your years of service. It's been a long time, Dan, you know? So, yeah, I just wanted to, you know, thank you because when I first came in, you really helped me out. When I first came in, I was new to politics, new to all this, and I didn't know anything. You really helped me out and I appreciate that at that time. So, you know, good luck in your retirement. So, that's it. Thank you.
Mayor.
Just real quick, I just want to say, Dan and Don, thank you. It has been a pleasure serving with you. Appreciate it and all of your time and years spent dedicated to this borough. It's been amazing. And I want to thank the first responders and Chief Hand. We're doing a fantastic job containing that five-arm fire.
Normally, at this time, I say I have nothing to add. And that's not the case tonight. As Don said, Don and I have one more public meeting to do, and that's Monday evening. But what I have to say, what I have to say, I not only want to share with you here in the room, but also those sitting at their homes and watching us. And it's important that you watch us. I think it's more important that you show up in person, but if you can watch us on your television, this is your town. To me, it's like my family. And you all need to invest something if it's only an hour a month to watch this meeting, to see what's going on in your town. It's the afternoon. I got a notice on my email telling me that Harrisburg, the legislators there were generous enough to give themselves a raise again. And it reminded me in a discussion I had with our solicitor, Mr. Garner, this council has not raised its stipend in 30 years. They haven't asked for a raise. They didn't vote to get another raise. And I think that's proof that those who sit up here are not doing it for the money. They come here because they believe in something, and what they believe in is Pottstown. If you know anything about PAID, you're going to know why I said I picked Pottstown. Let me begin by saying, been here 16 years. This has been one hell of an education for me. And you know, in most school systems, after 16 years, you get some recognition or a degree. So after 16 years of study here in this Borough Hall, I'll be getting a master's in borough counseling. The first time I decided to run for council, I thought we, that is Pottstown, could do better, should do better. Better in finance, better in operation. We were struggling at that time to recover from the loss of major industries and employment. Pardon me, Michael. And the loss of retailers, the local retailers that were moved out to the malls. And on the night of my first election win, a young reporter asked me what my goals were. And I knew. I replied, first, safety. Safety's first everywhere. And then jobs. We needed good-paying jobs and also businesses. After a short time in this seat, being a father, being a grandfather, I realized I had just adopted another family. Pottstown's my family, 23,000 of them. They're my extended family, and I want to look out for them. So, beginning in the borough at that time, when I first started, the borough finances were not so good. So over years, we changed the way we budget, the way we finance future needs. We started capital funding to save for capital purchases before they were needed. This saves the borough finance and interest costs. And let me give you an example. The last two fire trucks that we purchased, we paid cash. Which saved us about $1 million a truck versus financing those purchases. Think of that. Maybe savings pays off. Pardon me. Now, as for safety, we've worked closely with the county and our own chief Markovich worked hand-in-hand with the DA to get the latest crime-fighting technology into Pottstown. We're all well-aware of the Shot Spotter System and its ability to track down gunfire. So if you're going to shoot a gun within the borough, we will know where you are instantly. And that's just the beginning of other technologies to come. The third thing I'm proud of is our Efficient Methods Committee. With the help of our Vice President, Don Lebedinsky, we formed the Efficient Methods Committee to improve the processes that we use here within Borough Hall and in dealing with those outside. We've streamlined computer programs, improved information sharing, made it easier for our staff to work together. And we also made it easier for investors to work with the borough. Proof of that, the last two favorable comments came in from new developers, both with major projects on Hanover Street. They said, "We're one of the easiest boroughs to work with." Doesn't mean we cave into everything, but we make the processes smooth and easy to use. Now, there is, after 16 years, there's so much more I could say. But I don't want to go on like a mayor. So I'll keep it short.
No, I caught that.
Okay. But actually, I want to say thank you to all the people who elected me to council. And I thank you to the councillors who elected me to be your president. I'm so glad I picked Pottstown. And to show you what we're up to, how far we've come. Pardon me. I have a little clip I want to show to those of you here and those at home to show you exactly what our town is now. Through the courtesy of PAID, they allowed me to replay this tonight. If you will. Pretty much packed into these 5.5 square miles, right? So in the last 20 years, we have come a long way. And I always said, Pottstown's a goldmine. We just haven't tapped it yet. The difference is, when we work together as a community, we all move forward. We try to do everything individually. We all kind of lose on our own. So, yeah, I did adopt everyone as part of my family. And this is just the beginning. We're moving ahead.
...